On behalf of every, the select board and all others in positions of authority, I'd like to welcome you all. I'd like to start this meeting a little bit differently than we normally do. There are three individuals who this year are leaving the service that they've performed for the, for this town over many, many, many years. And I have been asked to call a number of people up here who wish to say a few words about those three people. They are Bill Batzo, Linda Hall, and Bruce Martell. I'd like to start off by asking yours, Palatier, to come up and say a few words about Bill.
Should I come there?
Somebody can go up there.
One of the three is Bill Batzo, who retired after sixteen years as our state representative. It would be impossible to begin to describe the impact these years of service have had on our community, both collectively and individually. Suffice it to say, he has done exemplary work for the state, for our town, and most importantly, for us as constituents. If you have not already done so, I encourage you to read his final legislative letter to the Town of Powell, which is on page nineteen of the annual report. Please join me in thanking both Bill for his years of service and his wife Ruth, who very generously and graciously shared him with us all those years. And there's a long case for each of the honor reads, but they can pick up if they need to.
Thank you, Rose. The second person we'd like to honor this evening is Linda Hall. And I ask Sarah, uh, Sarah Sam Filippo. Filippo, can I ask if I can get my glasses correctly or not?
Sam Filippo.
Sam Filippo.
Thank you. I need my glasses. So, I'll start by saying that Powell has been blessed with, to be devoted, a longtime service of a very special community member, Linda Hall, who was the volunteer library director of the library from nineteen eighty-eight into twenty eighteen. Linda served on the board before becoming the library director. In her thirty-plus years of devoted service to the library and to Powell, she has done a lot for the local community. Such as keeping the collection of well over fifteen thousand books current, constantly adding new materials, and knowing the interests of all patrons, providing things through her library home that we didn't have in the library itself. Assisting students in particular was one of her special interests, aiding them with their research. Training and managing a wonderful team of volunteers, keeping the library open. The backbone of our library that keeps it going is the volunteers. She encouraged local groups to use the facility for their gatherings, offered children's programming, summer reading programs. And as a genealogist, she's been providing the genealogy assistance to locals and visitors from around the country who have ancestors here in Powell. Even encouraging people to use the free Wi-Fi, even when the library's not open, come sit in the parking lot and use the Wi-Fi. She's accomplished several additional tasks, including two building additions, the community room in nineteen ninety-five, which made the building ADA compliant, and the Lucy Reading Room in twenty twelve. And then in twenty ten, something that we take for granted now, she got the catalog online, so you can access things through your computer now instead of all those little card catalog cards. She worked full-time elsewhere until her recent retirement. She did all of this at evenings and weekends in her spare time. The current board of the library, former board members, the dedicated volunteers, and all the community who use the library are deeply grateful to Linda for her extraordinary contribution to Powell.
Thank you, Sarah. And lastly, we'd like to have a few words said about someone that is not going to be here this evening for the first time in many, many years. Bruce Martell and Jim Winchester is going to say a few words.
First off, I want to say, Bill, Linda, you're here. That's great. And I couldn't ask for too nice of people, live in any community. I have to think about somebody in this past. And for the man said so many things, I had to really roll back my memories. And I take it back to nineteen seventy-nine, the summer. The summer would be that anniversary of a young lady that got in a very bad accident crossing the racetracks, and she was trapped in her car for a long, long time. And a group of people here decided that it was time that we add the Jaws of Life. And we formed a group, I like to feel a little Jeopardy where you hear the lighting things up, the mystery man. And I would refrain from some of the older people in the rescue squad not to mention it, but we had a... The Jaws of Life is called the Lucas Tool, that's his real name. And we checked it out, it cost twenty thousand dollars, which was a lot, a lot of money. And we got involved with a lot of really nice people, firemen, the rescue squad, the agent. Just, we shook every tree we could shake for money. And we wound up with about eighteen thousand or so. And a guy walks in my store one day and he says, Jim, how much is it? How are you doing? And I told him the amount, he wrote the check. He got us going. And that's the mystery man. And he's dead and gone, and he wouldn't like me to tell the story to name. But the name was Cleveland Dodge. And Cleveland Dodge, you're in great company with Bruce Martell, Cleveland Dodge. I gotta mention George and Helen Renner. I'm going to stop at Charlie Palmer, because there's too many people, there's a bunch of back of me. And there's a bunch of people I'd like to name here, that are just really good people who've done a lot for this community, and they don't want any attention. And now Bruce, I miss it dearly.
Before we begin the business section of this meeting, I'd like to, on behalf of all of us, express to the town road people the extra job that they've done under very, very difficult circumstances. The roads are open, they've been safe, and not too slippery. Thank you very much for all those people. The inhabitants of the town of Powell qualified to vote in the town meeting are hereby notified and warned to meet at the Powell Elementary School in said town on Monday, March fourth, two thousand nineteen, at seven thirty P.M. o'clock. In the afternoon or on Tuesday, March five, two thousand nineteen, for Australian ballot voting at the Powell Center Firehouse to vote the following issues to candidates: Lotterer, one year; Selectman, three years; Selectman, one year; Selectman, one year; Selectman for remaining one year of a three-year term; Lister for three years; Lister for two years; Lister for one year; Auditor for three years; Auditor for two years; Auditor for one year; Constable for two years; Town Agent for one year; Trustee of Public Muddies for two years; Trustee of Public Muddies for two years. The four meeting on March fourth, two thousand nineteen, will open at the Powell Elementary School at seven thirty for Articles one and two, and stand adjourned until seven A.M. at the Powell Center Firehouse for Australian ballot voting on Articles three through twenty-eight. Polls will be opened from seven A.M. till seven P.M. at the Powell Center Firehouse. All right, we have to, we vote on the first and two articles. And then what we will do is I'll read the article. And if anybody wishes to speak to that article, he or she should raise their hand and let us know if they'd like to speak. If you are not a member of Powell, not a resident of Powell, we ask that you identify yourself as not being. And what we would do, the group here would approve your speaking to that article. Only if the group approves it will you be able to speak. Okay. To hear reports of town officers and take action thereon. Need a motion to accept that? Cindy, for the second. Any, Jim, thank you. Any discussion on that? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed or abstentions? Article two, to see if the voters will authorize its trust to receive taxes until they become delinquent. Motion for that? Make the motion. Thank you. Second? Thank you. Any discussion on that article? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed or abstentions are the passes. The following articles we voted tomorrow. Election of all officers required by law. Article two, shall the voters appropriate one million forty-one thousand seven hundred and ninety dollars for the general expenses of the town, of which five hundred and sixty thousand two hundred and forty-three dollars and ninety-three cents is to be raised by taxes, and one hundred and eighty-nine thousand seven hundred and ninety-six dollars and seven cents from prior undesignated surplus funds. Article five, shall voters appropriate one million twenty-three thousand six hundred dollars for the maintenance and construction of highways in the town, of which eight hundred and sixty, thirty-six thousand twenty-nine and sixty-three cents shall be raised by taxes, and fifty-one thousand four hundred and seventy dollars and thirty-seven cents for prior year undesignated surplus funds. Number six, shall the voters appropriate eleven thousand dollars towards the support of the Bennington Area Visiting Nurse Association and Husky. Seven, shall the voters appropriate five hundred dollars for the support of the Bennington Community Conservation District. Eight, shall the voters appropriate five hundred dollars towards the support of the Bennington County Association Against Child Abuse, a nonprofit agency? Yes?
I'm not a resident of Powell, I'm staff.
Anybody have a problem with her speaking? If not, we ask you to come up and reduce the microphone? Thank you.
I'm going to hold this while you please, you all. So my name's Jenna Caslin, I'm the case coordinator at the Bennington County Association Against Child Abuse. We're also known as the Bennington County Child Advocacy Center, or the CAC. We're a staff of two, we're located at one twenty-nine Allen Bennington. We also have two detectives that are co-located with us, the SIU, the Special Investigations Unit. My role there is to provide support and services for victims of sexual abuse of any age, child victims of egregious physical abuse and neglect, medical neglect, and online offenses. In addition to providing the supports and services, we also do education and prevention in the community. So I've been working here in Powell with the youth. I start at Head Start tomorrow, I had a parent night here at Powell last week, and I was supposed to start this morning, but we had the two-hour delay. So I'll be starting tomorrow morning with the students here, doing some abuse prevention. So I hope you'll vote yes again, thank you so much for your support last year.
Thank you. Shall the town of Powell vote to raise, appropriate, and spend the sum of two thousand dollars for the support of the Bennington Free Clinic? Ten, shall the voters appropriate two thousand dollars towards the support of the Bennington Project Independence? Eleven, shall the town of Powell voters to appropriate the sum of one thousand eight hundred dollars to support the program, Services, BROC, Community Action in southwestern Vermont for low-income persons? Twelve, shall the voters appropriate six hundred dollars for the support of services rendered to the town by the Green Mountain Retired Senior Volunteer Program and Volunteer Center? Thirteen, shall the voters appropriate two hundred dollars for the support of Vermont Rea? Fourteen, shall the voters appropriate five thousand dollars towards the support of the Oak Hill Children's Center?
Sam?
Yes.
Good evening, I'm the director of the Oak Hill Children's Center.
Do you need your name, please?
Yes, my name is Karen Gilis, I'm sorry, I'm a resident of Powell. The Oak Hill Children's Center is a childcare center and a preschool and pre-K program for children in Powell and Bennington, Vermont. The money that you have given us over the years has helped us support scholarships for those children who reside in Powell. And this year we were able to offer twenty-eight scholarships. It also comes to support our capital funding. So I'd like to thank you all. And again, on behalf of the board of directors of the Oak Hill Children's Center, I'd like to ask you to please vote this and again tomorrow. And, thank you.
Again. Thank you. Fifteen, shall voters appropriate sixty thousand dollars towards the operation and maintenance of the Powell Fire Protective Association Incorporated? Yes?
My name's Jamie Yow, I'm the president of the Powell Fire Protective Association. I'd like to thank everybody for their support in the past years and hoping to get some continued support. As of right now, we have numerous firefighters in our firefighter one and two program. Going to school for that now. So just like to say thanks for your support and ask for continued support. Thank you.
Thank you, Jamie. Sixteen, shall voters appropriate fifty thousand dollars for the Powell Rescue Squad towards ambulance replacement, insurance, operation, and maintenance?
Yep.
Yes.
Good evening, everybody, I'm Ellen Strohmeier, and I just wanted to say thank you for your support in the past. And we are hoping that you will support us again. We are doing an open house in the spring, and we invite everyone to come. We will be advertising it, so you'll know when it is. We don't have a date set yet. We have bought a new squad, and you're welcome to stop in any time during the day. There's usually somebody there if you'd like to see it before the open house. Thank you.
Seventeen, shall the voters appropriate for the operation and maintenance of the Powell Valley Fire Department consisting of each Powell Fire Company, Powell Center Company, and the North Powell Fire Company for the sum of fifty-two thousand dollars? Yes?
My name's Bob Mann, I'm the president of the Powell Valley Fire Department. I want to thank everybody for their support and hope we continue to get your support. And for everybody, men, women, who are just sitting home on a Monday night, you're welcome to come to one of the fire stations and just ask questions. Thank you.
Eighteen, shall the voters appropriate fifteen, nineteen thousand five hundred dollars towards the Powell Valley Fire Department, fire truck, and equipment? Nineteen, shall the town of Powell vote to raise, appropriate, and spend the sum of two thousand dollars for the support of the Powell Youth Baseball?
Good evening, my name's Dan Sherman, I'm the president of the Powell Youth Baseball. This money allows us to essentially keep baseball free. We do ask kids to sell racket tickets, whatever kid, and Powell can play baseball for free. We also are trying to do some capital improvements to our little field down there on three forty-six. Not capital improvements, but we've had, they get by with pond sand and stuff for the infield. So we're hoping to be able to replace that with clay. We actually have enough money this year to upgrade our little baseball field. Thank you for your support, I hope to continue it.
Match the field bank. Field bank, good. Please tell us all. Twenty, shall the voters appropriate five hundred dollars for the support of services rendered to the town by Project Against Violent Encounters? Twenty-one, shall the voters appropriate fifteen thousand dollars for the operation and maintenance of the Solomon Wright Library? Yes?
Yeah, my name is Julius Rosenmull, and I'm on the board of the Solomon Wright Public Library. And at last, I'd like to have our board members stand. This year there are two line items in support of the library. One is fifteen thousand dollars, which is basically for heat, electricity, utilities. Another is for a new chapter in the library. And that's fifteen thousand dollars for a part-time director. We want to be Powell's community center, we want to be Powell's library, and we want it to be your library. And just for, to put it in small change terms, the total budget for the library, which would be thirty thousand dollars, amounts to two and a half cents, a little less than two and a half cents per person per day. So we really hope to come out and support this. And there is a survey that we are providing to see what the community wants from their library. Hours, programming, everything. But it's a wonderful spot, it's got a lot of potential. And I want to take this opportunity to thank personally Linda Hall, who's dedicated thousands of hours to this library. And I think we should just keep it going for our community and in her honor. Thank you very much. Oh, one thing, a heads up, this summer we're going to have a day, yet to be determined, to honor Linda, and Helen, and George Renner. And I think that would be a fun event. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Article twenty-two, shall the voters appropriate one thousand two hundred dollars for the support of the services rendered to the town by the southwestern Vermont Area Council on Aging? Twenty-three, shall the voters appropriate five thousand dollars towards the support of Sunrise Family Resources Center, a nonprofit agency? Yes?
My name is Cindy Toomeyer.
To my, come here, give the microphone.
I am not a resident of Powell.
So if anybody have a problem with her speaking, go ahead.
I'm the fiscal manager of Sunrise Family Resource Center. For over fifty years, Sunrise has been in the business of strengthening families throughout Bennington County. Last year, we helped about ninety families from Powell. We are a member of the child, the network throughout the state. We provide early education for small children, we provide a alternative diploma program for families, intensive in-home case management, we have a housing program. It's a, it's a agency that really provides vital, necessary, wraparound support services for struggling families. Last year, your generosity was wonderful. And I'm hoping that this year we will also again, to continue to support us so we can support your families and the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Article twenty-five, shall the voters appropriate two thousand five hundred dollars towards the support of the program and service provided to the town by the Tutorial Center? Excuse me?
Article twenty-four.
Article twenty-four, article twenty-five, shall the voters appropriate four hundred and forty dollars for the support of enabled vermothers by the Vermont Center, disabled vermothers by the Vermont Center for independent living? Article twenty-six? Yes, I'm sorry.
Hi, my name is Joel Longland, I am a lifelong member of Powell, I live on Hope Drive down there. So, each year we go to our lecture, and we sort of check the block, how many is valid, or are there others? So, at Powell Land and Track, so it might surprise you to know that there's twenty articles on there that ask for our money. The total of those twenty articles is two hundred and thirty-three thousand five hundred and forty-four dollars. That's what we have to spend. Eight people come to speak on the twenty replacements. But every year we check the block and give our money away. Money that's not budgeted, but comes out of our taxes. So, I think that we need accountability before we spend that kind of money. I think the chief ought to come up and give us accountability of whether they spend the money at the fire department, at the rescue squad, because we know they got great equipment. And we know they're spending money, there's grants out there, there's things that they should come and let us know how much they appreciate the dollars that we give, and what we're using the dollars for. I don't think, Julie, if you know how much it costs to send somebody to a fire for ten months, and what we pay to put that to end. Our rescue squad, that green squad, it's faithful, that's good. What do the other sixteen organizations do for us? You know, obviously the library is the greatest place, and you create a great telling of the money. And I feel great about checking the block and saying, yeah, there's more, good money. Thank, if you're using, obviously, you have a great report. I'd say everyone should think about that when they go to the polls. Read it and think about, what are we spending our money on?
Excuse me, we have, the way that this is organized is that if an individual wants to speak on a particular article, he or she may do so. But it is not organized to be able to make a speech in terms of the overall budget.
Am I out of order?
Just, if you just finish up.
And I saw what I wanted to say, I just think we should think about the agencies, though, as a group, the twenty agencies, before we check that. Thank you.
Thank you. Article twenty-six, shall the voters approve acquisition of a eight-point-five acres of land located at one nine seven Maple Grove Road, parcel zero zero seven dash thirty-two, span four nine five dash one five six dash one zero four eight six, for the purpose of the town gravel pit at a cost of two hundred thousand dollars? Said capital acquisition to be financed for a term of five years or less by the inter-municipal loan using existing allocated road funds. Would you like to speak to that? Yes, that would be good, thank you.
Joel Burlington, I'm your own foreman. As you know, we need gravel, we have forty miles plus of dirt roads. Right now, we're just about, boy, I don't know if I can get enough this year to make up another four thousand yards. This article, if we do this, we figured, so it wouldn't raise taxes, we're keeping it within our budget, our gravel budget, for a hundred and five thousand. This hasn't, this land has been ruined around, it's been up for sale way cheaper. This land has never been up for sale, right? So, we worked the deal out, negotiated. If anybody knows me, that wasn't my first price, two hundred thousand. So, but you try to save the town money. You know, our own sand costs us forty thousand dollars this year. If we had our own, we could screen it for two, three dollars a gallon. But I think it's goodbye.
How does that end the loan work? I don't quite understand the wording.
Well, we're going to take out a five-year loan. We have the money in the budget already. So we're going to use existing funds rather than, you know, go back and ask the taxpayers extra money. Ellen's the one talked away the loan. She'll be on the bank. Could you watch this, anybody have?
Is this a double question? Yes, Jim, and then we'll get around to it. Okay, no, I just want to say, this is one of the, the Petzel, this is Martin Hall, when he was his wife. He maintained this land, he took care of it, it's gravel pit, but it's a diamond in the rock. It's goodbye. And he...
rock, it's goodbye, and he's been on that land quite a bit, so we were able to get our hands on it pretty soon.
Another lady, yes?
Yes.
Would you identify someone?
My name is Jenny Dior.
Would you mind coming up to the microphone, just so everybody can hear you?
Hey Joel, can you clarify that, confirm that in the five years of paying this off, it would be actually less expensive than buying gravel from elsewhere?
Yes, definitely. Yes.
Very good, thanks for that. Any other questions, yes?
That was asked today, Joel, we didn't shake off, here now. That was under your question, wasn't it?
No, you want to speak, I can't hear you.
I'll bring the microphone. Come here, come here. I guess we'll wait out.
No, I was asked. I was asked today by a citizen, and I really didn't have all the answers, but we are gonna do tests, polls, to make sure of this material, for some staff, correct?
Yes, we are, actually, one year, we were starting, was gonna do them before, let's see if the people go back, it's gonna cost us five, six thousand, and we're gonna do some test whorings to see what's in there, to make sure it's not just a bunch of junk for buying.
Well, that was the question that I wanted to know, because if we're gonna, you don't know what land is, unless you dig into it, or whoring or something. All right, I just wanted that on record.
I'm actually pretty confident, the town had a good pit all one years, Bill Byron had a good pit, you know, it's all in that same vein that runs out through there, it could pretty much be the same hysteria.
Very good, thank you, thank you Joel. Any other questions on this? Sounds like a, a good deal. Okay, Article twenty-seven, shall the voters of Powell, Vermont, appropriate fifteen thousand dollars to the role of a part-time director of the Solomon Wright Public Library. That's pretty good, huh? I still think it's a good idea. Thank you, Julius. I wouldn't let it get away without saying something. So many people use it, and those people that do not have good reception for their Wi-Fi and have very, very poor, they make a weekly trip down to the library to load up their computers, which is very necessary these days. Twenty-eight, shall the voters authorize the select board to acquire, maintain, and operate two new school buses donated by the Powell School District at an estimated cost of thirteen thousand four hundred and fifty dollars in the road fund? Would you like to speak to that? Yes?
Rosemary Pelletier, I was at the select board meeting earlier this week, and Michael, you mentioned some concerns in terms of insurance, et cetera, so I think it might be appropriate to voice those here in terms of the article. My question is whether it makes financial sense for us to take on the buses, and what educational opportunities it provides that we wouldn't have without them, even if those were not considerations. Does it make sense to take ownership of the buses and then just turn around and sell them, so that the town gets some money? Because it seems to me that if we don't take possession of them, and the court ruling does not go in the favor of the Powell School, then we simply lose all of the buses and have nothing to show for that investment. So I guess that's my question, that assumes we could sell them, but there's a lot of schools out there, and we think if we owned buses, we could turn around and sell them, even if it wasn't to our advantage to continue to own them.
Everybody can feel comfortable addressing that?
Sure. Can I make a comment?
Sure.
Excuse me. I think it's important to keep in mind that we have plundered these buses from taxpayer dollars, if you remember, there was always a sinking fund for buses. I mean, if you look at the, the school board, the school board's budget and the town budget, and you put them on, and you kind of think of it as a pool, for the taxpayer's support, we are still, you know, a field trip for students at the Powell Elementary School, for the two four buses to pull out of the yard, they start charging a hundred dollars. So I don't care if you're going from here to Bennington, they're charging you a hundred dollars to pull out of the schoolyard. The other problem is, is the Powell Elementary School has a direct program in the summertime that many of us, including myself, have used for our children, that, that transportation was free as well. And also, there's a ski program at the school, that the buses transport the kids to the ski slopes, and it's very reasonable, and my children participated in it, and so I'm sure many of your children have. So I just want to keep, you have to keep this in mind, I believe if the buses are not voted on, then they go back to the state, is that how that works, Mike? No? So I, I just want to remind you of those things.
Cindy Brownell, what I did was, the school board did, we approached the select and asked them to take ownership of two of our buses, so that we may continue doing field trips for our children. We tried to get to four, they're too expensive, the timing is never correct, and I have a list, and we go on like twenty field trips a year. It's so educational for these children, and what happens is, the school has joined the litigation. Now, it doesn't look like we, we are gonna win our case, so come July one, the new board takes over, it's made up of two board members from every district, it will be their decision if these buses are not taken over, whatever property we own as common becomes theirs. I'm trying to save two. We can even leave them at the school, we don't have to move them anywhere, we have drivers that will drive, I just think it's a, for the benefit of the children, and I've been on the board nineteen years, and it's, it's pretty sad to have to go into the school and say, I'm sorry, kids, you're not going on a field trip anymore, because we can't afford it. So I appreciate your support.
Did everybody hear that? Jim, why don't you, why don't you, come over.
Jim's question was, this question was, does the state take over this building? This building right now is in the name of the school. When the new school board, the new select board, and I'm worried, I have until July one, that was my next step, is to come to the select board, ask them to put this school in their name, the town account. Then that saves, number one, the town and the school bought the generator, this is a fallout shelter for our town. I would like to save the school also. We, we worked with the select board, and they took over the ball field down in North Powell, so the children could have that for all the ball games that they play with, that they play down there, that is used all the time. That's saved. Anything the school owns will then be turned over to this new State Act Forty-Six, and if you haven't figured it out by now, I don't agree with it.
So does that include the senior center over here?
Yes, it does, so. But again, it's going to be the decision of that.
Here we are, here we are, looking for a town office. We just had a beautiful meeting here with, with candidates in the library, what a nice place. We bought this place a long time ago, my kids, for the first years, are coming here. This is a really, really fine facility.
Yes, it is.
And for someone to take it over, this, the only thing that the State Forty-Sixes, it's a marriage that you cannot do, there's no divorce here. And to lose this property, when we're, when we're trying to build a new town office, there's a place you could do anything. Are we out of our minds? You can't let this fall. There has to be a way we can keep this building.
That's why I signed up to run it over three years, so that I can be at this meeting, and be a big mouth for this, see how they're gonna handle our children, otherwise, trust me, it's been a decision, should I get off, should I not? Well, I'm not, and I do have a big mouth, so I, I do want to represent those children in this building.
Before, before I ask for a vote to adjourn this meeting, there are a few other people that would like to speak for you, some will do here, one is the landfill transfer station.
Transfer station.
Transfer station, very good. Do you want to talk, and say what you want to say?
Yeah. I'm Tom Schuie, I'm the supervisor of their transfer station. I have a few handouts over here, there's three of them right here in front of the table. One is a Solid Waste Alliance survey, which we're required to hand out, hopefully we get enough people to fill it out, this is part of the Act One Forty-Eight, drives everything that we do, and it's to the Solid Waste Alliance. And then, we have, I have folders, I have flyers over there for the Household Hazardous Waste Collection Day in the spring, which is Saturday, May eighteenth, from eight to one, up at the Bennington Transfer Station. And then I have another one here, this is a newsletter from the Bennington Solid Waste Alliance, and on that, there is a link to this survey, if you don't want to take one here, please take one of these, it's just, it only takes two minutes to do it, but it really helps us, and it really helps us get our better feedback of what we're doing, we have to do it every three years, so we have that. And then we have Greenup Day coming, and that's May fourth, first Saturday in May, so always that day. What I want to do is, I want, now I have to thank Bruce Martell again, I know he's not with us, but he helped significantly last year with the Legion, we were able to replace a thirty-yard dumpster down there, we were, we used a pavilion, kids were down there, we had probably thirty to forty children, adults, and we had hot dogs, and burgers, and all kinds of snacks and things for everybody, and it was by far, and I do mean by far, the largest greenup day we've ever had. And this year, we also have, the Legion has graciously donated that to us again from the day, and I must, I must thank them again, because they, without them, it wouldn't have been nearly as successful as, as what we had. Now, we also have a group here in town that works year-round on cleaning up the roads and so forth, and it's called Powell Proud, and I'm going to have Dave Low come up and speak a little bit about that. But please remember, right over at the table, your way out, pick up some of these, these items, if you would please, and then we have an idea of what, what we're doing, and what is coming up, because May fourth is not that far away now, it really isn't, thank you. I know, I know I just snowed everybody's shell this morning, it doesn't seem that close, but hopefully it is. David?
Dave Low, town president, as Tom indicates, the Powell Proud seeks to encourage year-round and town-wide citizen involvement in the task of reducing litter from our roads and streams. We meet approximately monthly in the library, thank you very much, library, and we're always looking for more people to attend. We're also hoping to find more and more people who will be interested in taking on the task of adopting roads themselves here, and looking out for specific roads during the course of the year. Anyone who's interested in getting on our email distribution list and stop by and see we can take a look at our, our Powell Proud poster, and feel free to enjoy us. One small anecdote serves to provide an example of how Powell roots can evolve into Powell values. Parker Preve grew up in Powell, fondly remembers hiking and swimming in the tubs as a kid. He admits that as a teenager, he was guilty of tossing his fair share of beer bottles and cigarette butts along the path right there, but now, as an adult living in the area, Parker is committed to making up for his teenage shirt side mess. He now regularly can be seen walking the paths of the tubs with a garbage trash bag in hand, and he has even gone so far as to create this bumper sticker, the tubs, which gives the compass coordinates, the location, rubber ducky. Now that's Powell pride, and we are grateful to park. So please, join us however you can, and you can do it in small ways, in your own neighborhoods around town, you can do it in larger ways, and we hope to see many of you out on our beautiful roads on May fourth.
And last, or maybe not least, Nelson, I melt with like a duck.
I'm gonna have Brian, do I need?
I believe I need permission.
Yes, you do. Why don't you, you want, how do you want to do this, Nelson?
I'm gonna face him here, just one thing, I'm facing here, I'm gonna have Brian do something first, if you don't mind.
Does anybody have a Brian, a Brian, do you have any?
Yeah.
Come out of town.
Who is it?
He's one of our senators for the Bennington County.
Great, and I guess I'd like to have Linda Hall come up also. Probably the last thing she wants to do, but. So I have a Senate concurrent resolution here honoring you, you're gonna get the official document in the mail, but I have the words here, so this is on behalf of Senator Sears, myself, Senator Campion, Representative Brownell, Representative Carroll, and Representative Morrissey, and I guess we would call him Representative Botso, but what is it, when you retire, but you're still, yes, thank you, I know it is. So if you'll bear with me for just a moment, State Concurrent Resolution honoring Linda Hall for her thirty years of outstanding volunteer leadership as the Director of the Solomon Wright Public Library in Powell. Whereas the key precept of the mission of the Solomon Wright Public Library in Powell is to promote the joys and benefits of lifelong learning, and whereas the library is exemplary director for three decades, Linda Hall implemented this mission superbly, and whereas her accomplishments, leading the library and its all volunteer staff were numerous and of enduring benefit to its patrons, and whereas on the digital front, Linda Hall spearheaded the establishment of an online catalog of fifteen thousand entries as the library's contributions to the town's two-hundred-and-fiftieth birthday celebration, and more recently, she oversaw the introduction of the fiber optic Wi-Fi system, facilitating mobile device internet access, and whereas during her tenure, two building upgrades resulted in the library becoming compliant with the Americans with Disabilities Act, and adding a community room, a new reading room, and an office. And whereas among her successful efforts were increased operational hours and improved children's services, such as the Summer Reading Project, and whereas Linda Hall maximized usage of the resources of the interlibrary loan system, and served as an excellent genealogical research resource, and whereas she coordinated book group meetings, craft nights, and an annual book sale that served as a major fundraiser, and whereas Linda Hall's administrative skills were evident in her budgetary planning, town report contribution, and the library's annual achievement of the Department of Libraries' standards for public libraries, and whereas after three decades of excellent leadership at the Solomon Wright Public Library, she has concluded her directorship, and whereas Linda Hall will be greatly missed among the library's patrons and volunteers, but left, left a vastly enhanced institution that is the pride of Powell, now therefore being resolved by the Senate and House of Representatives in the state of Vermont, that the General Assembly honors Linda Hall for thirty years of outstanding volunteer leadership as the Director of the Solomon Wright Public Library in Powell. as the Director of the Solomon Wright Public Library in Powell. And be it further resolved, the Secretary of State be directed to send a copy of this resolution to Linda Hall and to the Solomon Wright Public Library. Congratulations. Thank you.
I just have a little something, very short. A librarian named Melville Dewey once said, "The library's function is to give the public the quickest and most economical way to information, recreation, and inspiration." I hope our townspeople will continue to support those functions and Solomon Wright Library's mission stated on our website. Not only does the support assist the residents of Powell in the present and the future, but honors those volunteers who worked hard to ensure that town would have a lasting opportunity that is fostered by the building of a local library in nineteen sixty-five, opening in nineteen sixty-six. Thank you for your votes of support in the springs past. And may you continue to say yes in the springs of the future.
So I can raise something and pour it in the mic like I'm up there?
Nope.
Otherwise, I'll be trying to shuffle things in my hand, and I'm sure. Well, as you know, I present Paul Woodford here. And when I went to Woodford, I said these words first. This'll be short. I, first time, don't have a whole lot to say. I asked them if they had any questions, and I couldn't believe how many questions they had that they asked me, but they did. But as you know, the other people that put me there, and I appreciate it very much, and I want to thank you all. And I hope I can do you proud. What I've done is, I was pointing to the Government Ops Committee up there. But the one thing I guess I would say first is, it's a lot more to learn than I thought it was. You know, you think you're putting in a bill, then the bill gets voted on, and away it goes. Well, first of all, you put in the bill, then you have the legislative lawyers look at it and try to make sure that your wording is right. Then it comes back to a committee. The committee might take it off the wall, they might not. If they do, then they do some action, would pass it to a couple more committees. And then from there, it makes it to the floor where I'm gonna find out next week for the first time what it means to be poured on the floor because my chairman gave me the great pleasure of choosing me to be poured out of bills. But then we'll do that. And then from that point, we'll pass it. Then it moves on to the Senate. And they have the great fun of either modifying, changing, or voting it out the way we do it. And then the governor gets his chance to put his pen to it. So that's sort of the process I'm learning. But I'm also trying to learn a hundred and fifty people's names. That's the members in the House. And that, again, is, I might be up to about twenty-five in years from now. And that's because eleven are my committee where I serve. So that's where it is. But in Government Ops, what we've been doing is some things, meeting with the Secretary of State, meeting with the HR head of that, a lot of the people that basically run the various departments. But it was the Secretary of Education and whoever that was explaining why they either have a lack of staff and they need more, or... They all need more money. That's one thing I've learned. So they say anyways. But basically, what we got is, is a changing educational from the Secretary of Education, there's a change in education going on. It's not just Act Forty-six. It's a lot to do, a lot of things to change to do with how we teach our children a deed, how we teach people as we reach out. It's much more harder than I thought when you listen to him speak because of the staffing changes going on within the department. And if anybody's gone through change, it's the change of those people that are working for him as well as him being the new guy on the block that's having some ups and downs. And that was the education department thing. And OPR, which is the Office for Professional Regulations, they do a lot of licensing. And one of the things we're looking at now is, and there is a group, each year, they take a group of licenses of different organizations. And this year, we're looking at some nursing, we're looking at dockhammerships, we're looking at real estate people and others. And then, there's probably about eight of them total. And basically, we have to decide whether we should be expanding their ability to do things or not. And of course, they all come in wanting to do more things. But our goal is to see whether they should have more courses, have MDF, have their name, different things to do some things. And that's the OPR. But during this, one of the things that happened was a result-based accountability was put in place a few years ago. And what we're looking at is, is each time they report to us now, they have to show us different sections of what they're doing and how the results have been on it, whether they're increasing or whether they're decreasing, what it is, and explain to us why and what they would need to make things better in government and more cost-effective. So that's my learning curve there. There's more I could talk about, but I began to ramble. I'd rather, if somebody had questions to ask, I'd rather try to answer. And that's where I usually did my best, serving you with the other things. Is there anything that you heard from the legislature you're interested in me trying to give an answer to? Oh, you guys are quick crowds. Woodford had at least a half a dozen. Okay, thank you very much. And I hope to continue to support you the way you'd like to see me. Yeah, I'll just remind you, I did put down up here where you can sign up your name and give me your email and stuff that way there. When I get to put something out, I can make sure I get it out to you. Thank you.
Are there any other issues or subjects that should be brought before this group? Yes?
I'm Joanne Crowby. And Michael over here, and I don't remember his last name, has been with us about a year now. And I was wondering if he had some information or just wanted to tell us things that he's found in that town? And what's going on?
Would you want the spot there? Maybe next time. But there are a lot of issues, and I know that he's anxious to work with the new board as it becomes the legitimate board of the Powell. And I know that he's got a lot of things on his agenda. So if there are no other issues, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. And second, Jim, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, thank you very much.